Yeah. It's all right.
You want to go?
Come on, come on.
All right, I want to call the news.
Commissioner Milovich Walters? Commissioner Wade?
Present.
Commissioner Lee?
All for the President of the Union. For reasons to the flag, the United States of America, the republic for which we stand, a nation under God, neither of us will. There are reasons that this law.
Uh, a draft of the minutes from our previous meeting on March twenty seventh. Questions, comments, or suggestions? If not, I would seek a motion to approve at this time.
So moved. Second?
Hearing a motion and a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a few proclamations this evening. First, I want to proclaim April thirtieth through May second, two thousand twenty-three. It's Menace McPurk's week. I also want to proclaim May two thousand twenty-three Motorcycle Awareness Month and proclaim May two thousand twenty-three as Older Americans Month. Consent on agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward in the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. Discussion is desired. That item will be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve payment of invoices on a warrant listed April tenth, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents. Item B, to approve the supplemental warrant list dated April tenth, two thousand twenty-three for manual checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers in the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents. And do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved. Second?
Hearing a motion and a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Any items of old business we've brought before the council at this time? We have no board commission and community recommendations, so we'll just move to information and updates, Public Works and Streets, Recreation Report, Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a couple items on the agenda. The first one is regarding our irrigation system purchase. An irrigation system for the Village Green has been a priority for the village since the field was redone in two thousand sixteen. At its November ninth, two thousand fifteen meeting, the village council approved a proposal to design and install a proper field drainage system, regrade the sod and sod the entire grass field of the Village Green, and the cost of that project was thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. The irrigation system for the Village Green will be funded through a Department of Commerce and Community Affairs grant from the Build Illinois Bond Fund to the Village of Pales Park for costs associated with capital improvements for constructing a playground and installing a sprinkler system. This grant total was fifty thousand dollars for the two projects, with approximately ten thousand being for the irrigation system and forty thousand for the playground construction. Additional funding from the playground will come from the general fund balance. Build staff sought a proposal from Krepsky Sprinkler Systems to furnish all materials and labor necessary for the installation of an automatic sprinkler system to the Village Green field area. The base price for the system includes forty-eight pop-up gear-driven rotors in six zones using a self-draining system. The system will have the capacity to inject fertilizer and/or mosquito repellent onto the field, saving time and money. The cost for this system is nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. For an additional price of three hundred dollars, the option to include a RID-O-Rust injection system with a Wi-Fi timer. As the irrigation system will be tied to well system at the recreation building, the RID-O-Rust system will keep the spray from staining the adjacent concrete and wood structures. Staff recommends approving this option for a total price of ten thousand, forty dollars. Any questions? Now I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of an automatic irrigation system for the Village Green Field to Krepsky Sprinkler System Incorporated at a cost of ten thousand, forty dollars.
Uh, second. Hearing a motion and a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries.
So the next item is regarding our playground. I'm just going to read the first paragraph of this and then introduce somebody to everyone. The Village Green has been working with New Toys Leisure Products to scope out replacement playground equipment at the Village Green Park. The existing play structures at the Village Green are approximately twenty to twenty-five years old, show signs of wear from many years of use, and the play booster system is made by Landscape Structures. This product system is used in a number of parks and surrounding communities, including Pales Heights, Orland Park, and Homer Glen. When we purchase this playground equipment, it will include the installation and the removal of the existing equipment, installation of playbound play surface and wood chips at the Village Green Park. It will be partially funded through a Department of Commerce and Community Affairs grant from the Build Illinois Bond Fund to the Village of Pales Park for costs associated with capital improvements for constructing a playground and installing a sprinkler system. This grant total is fifty thousand for the two projects, ten thousand for the irrigation, and forty thousand toward the playground construction. So before we go into the cost of the playground equipment, I want to introduce Rick Beederman from New Toys to show us what our new playground will look like and tell us a little about it.
Thank you. Just so you all can use the microphone.
Thanks, Mayor. And everybody?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. As Nicole had indicated, my name is Rick Beederman. I am with New Toys Leisure Products out of Westchester, Illinois. We are a representative for Landscape Structures Incorporated out of Delano, Minnesota. Just to give you a little history on Landscape Structures, they've been in the business for a little over fifty years now. It is a employee-owned company with about four hundred full-time employees. Barb and Steve King, who originated the business back in nineteen seventy-one. Barb is passed, Steve is retired, they gave the entire business to the employees upon their leaving. So it's a terrific company. I have been with them for forty-one years, as I have told the committee before. I started when I was five. But the committee has done just a great job. This is very refreshing to me because this is what we did, what I did when I got in this business a long time ago, was go to meetings, present, and show people what we do and why we do it. And that all kind of went away with iPads and phones and everything else, and everybody wants to talk to a screen today. So meeting with your committee on three or four occasions was just very refreshing. Great questions, great ideas. They went out and played, they saw playgrounds, and they picked and chose the things they wanted, and that's how we came up with the design that we did. So just to kind of walk you through it, your space is going to remain the same, although we're going to kick it out back in one corner here, where we're going to expand the concrete border slightly in order to accommodate what is right here in the corner, the oodle swing. Now, the thought behind the design of every playground is we're required to create an ADA-compliant playground. That doesn't mean it has to have ramps, but we do have to have so many above-ground, so many ground-level types of activities for any disabled child or an adult to come and play on the playground. Lot more went into this than many of them, with pathways and pieces as we'll walk through here. So to look at it, what you try to do is you try to create so many ways up and so many ways down. Little one gets up to the six- or eight-foot-high deck and mom panics, she's got to be able to get up there to find him. So what we do is try to create as many ways up as many ways down. The basis of designs today is usually eight-inch increments, so you start at ground level, eight inches, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two, forty, forty-eight. Gets you up to anywhere from a six to an eight-foot deck. But there's also more complicated climbers, stones, nets, all different kinds of things that can go into the design. So what you have in your design are numerous slides. You have what's called a slide-winder slide here. Slides down from a six-foot-high deck. How do you get up there? Well, you can get up there by way of the net, you can get up there by way of what we call a canyon climber. This is a, what we call a GFRC rock climber, glass fiberglass reinforced concrete. It looks as rocky-real as you can imagine. The wishbone balance beam here, too, is the same product. Climbers, you can also get underneath here. You can peek, peek out from under there. So as you can climb across from six foot to six foot here, you can get over here and it takes us up over to another slide, and on the backside, there's a little climber that gets you up from ground level, too. You can see, they wanted to put an environmental approach into it. So we've got colors that are environmental-friendly, we've got rooftops, treehouse-looking type of playground, which I think is really cool. What you have on here is a track ride, which is a little zip line from one side to the other. We're very emphatic about having landing points on each end. We want the kids to be able to step up to sixteen inches and be able to grab the handle. We don't want them jumping and lunging and then getting to the other end and dropping down. We want them to land their feet on a platform. So that's what you see here. So everything in here is interconnecting. This is primarily for five-to-twelve-year-old children or older or adults. There's also a six-to-twenty-three-month or a two-to-five playground down in here for the smaller ones, too. But for those of you that have children or grandchildren, like I do, they want to get to the highest point as quickly as possible, and they do. They find their way up there. And the way it's designed, by stepping up increments internally, they can get up to the six-and-eight-foot deck very easily. But for those that don't, there's more ground-level type things for them, too. So wandering, when you approach the playground, the way we designed it is you come in through...
It's nothing. What is that?
So, okay. So you enter, and we created what's called a port-in-place pathway. Port-in-place material, if you're not familiar with it, is a rubberized material that looks like this. You have a base bottom, and then you've got a colored top. Your color options are numerous. It can be green and black, green and tan, tan and red, whatever you choose. The base at the bottom is all black. It goes over a five-inch compacted stone base. So with your design, what you will have is a combination of wood chips and rubber surfacing. The wood chips will come up to the sides of the rubber pathway and meet where the rubber will be built at that point. So as they approach the pathway, they can get to numerous different things. These are rhapsody pieces, which are musical, very much fun. The kids really, really, really enjoy those kinds of pieces, well as Grandma and Grandpa. They're out there playing. So as you get over here, the path will take you right to an accessible molded swing. There's also a tot swing and two-belt swings. And then the odyssey swing here is a swing that will accommodate large numbers of kids at one time, or one, if you choose to. So that kind of tells you a little bit about what went into the design. Questions? No questions?
When's it going to be done?
Right now, it's scheduled for, I believe, the end of September to start, late or early fall, and that's a sign of the times. We're normally a six-week delivery, but we're about three, four months right now. So, right now, I think our plan was to try to, try to get it going late September. With the rubber surface, we have to do that before the temperatures hit fifty degrees. That has to be done, so we usually can do that up till about middle of November, first of November. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Rick.
Thank you very much for being here at the meeting.
We went through many changes with the playground and some changes in the last four weeks where we were able to reconfigure and decide we could bump it out a bit so we can accommodate the oodle swing, which was something we thought a lot of kids would really enjoy because it's like a tire swing. So that pushed our delivery date out a little bit by making some changes. Hopefully, if things get delivered sooner, we'll get started sooner. That's, that's always the goal. But in the meantime, I'll talk about price. The cost of this playground equipment is proposed as one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Demolition of the existing equipment, installation of the new equipment, installation of the new playbound surface and mulch will be ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a total cost of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. While the grant has yet to disperse through DCO, DCEO, all necessary documents have been submitted, and the village funding request is currently in the state review process. Approximately one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars will be required and has been included in the upcoming twenty-four budget. The draft budget contains both the receipt of the grant revenue as well as this expenditure, and the budget anticipates an increase in the general fund surplus at the end of the year. Any other questions? I move to forego the bid, formal bid process and approve the proposal from New Toys Leisure Products of Westchester, Illinois for replacing the playground structures and surface at the Village Green Park at a cost of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Uh, second. Hearing a motion and a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters? Yes. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Beederman.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Next item on the agenda is regarding the engineering construction for the Water Main Extension from the former Holy Family Villa property to Cog Hill west of Bell Road. The village has previously entered into agreements with Baxter and Woodman for the I E P A required project plan, engineering plans for the Water Main Extension to the Cog Hill, and for assistance in completing the I E P A loan documentation. The village requested a proposal for Baxter for construction engineering. This agreement would cover construction layout and daily inspection during construction. Construction is estimated to take three months. This cost would be covered under the I E A, I E P A loan. In order to score higher point value during the I E P A review, a signed construction agreement is needed, and when the loan application grading begins, this is not to exceed contract cost of one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which is five-point five percent of the estimated construction cost of two million dollars and, two, two million, nineteen thousand dollars. Any questions?
Commissioner, this, this matter was on the original agenda on Friday. I'll list it, eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Because that was not discovered till this afternoon, we'll ask that it be continued till the next meeting. So if you seek a motion to continue to the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting, we appreciate it.
All right, well, let's make a motion to continue this to the April twenty-fourth meeting.
Uh, second.
Hearing a motion and a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters? Yes. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes, and motion carries. That item will be on the April twenty-fourth agenda.
And the next item on the agenda is regarding approval for a purchase of a fully-equipped Ford F-five-fifty. In May of two thousand twenty-two, Public Works requested that the village council approve the purchase of a new Ford F-five-fifty truck and equipment package. The truck cost at the time was forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, and the equipment package is seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars for a total cost of one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven twenty-five. The order for the truck was placed. Unfortunately, the village found out that due to demand, the order would not be fulfilled, and we announced that at the June two thousand twenty-two council meeting. March of two thousand twenty-three, the council approved buying a riding mower using some of the money that was budgeted for the truck spending, which was sixteen thousand, five seventy-five. This week, Public Works was made aware of availability of a truck that would be fully-equipped with a steel dump body, snow plow, salt spreader, hydraulic power system, and emergency lights at Cunis Auto Group in Antioch. This truck would be available in the next few months. When ordering such a truck, the wait time is typically one and a half years for delivery. The cost of the truck with the equipment is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Hundred and sixty thousand dollars was budgeted in the half-percent sales tax fund for the truck in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. With the cost of the proposed public work, with the cost as proposed, Public Works would stay within the budget, and Public Works is seeking approval to purchase this truck. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion to forego the formal bidding process and approve the proposal from Cunis Auto Group in Antioch, Illinois in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents to purchase a fully-equipped two thousand twenty-three Ford F-five-fifty truck.
So on the agenda is eight forty-seven. I think it's, as you read in the report, it's eight seventy-four.
Oh, wait. Yeah, wait. It flipped. Yeah, it said eight seventy-four, eight seventy-four.
I'll kick in the third. And the invoice says eight seventy-four, so I think it's eight seventy-four.
Yeah. One, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight seventy-four and twenty-six cents.
That's okay. Just a, just reverse mirror on that.
Yeah, and it was in the body of it, right. Okay.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters? Yes. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
I said I'd kick in the other thirty-four bucks. Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
And then just a couple announcements. K-five will return to the village the week of April twenty-third to start grinding the streets remaining from our two thousand twenty-two roadway paving project. They will begin in the Dells west of Eighty-Sixth Avenue, then move to the dead end of Eighty-Third South of One Hundred and Twenty-Third and North Woodland Trail. Weather permitting, the paving would begin the first week of May. And then for the fun stuff, recreation, Kids Zone Summer Camp registration is now open for Pales Park residents. So hurry up and sign up because non-residents registration opens Monday, April seventeenth. This summer, we are offering four two-week sessions. Five-day and three-day registration options are available. So make sure you call and sign up quickly. Pales Park's twenty-sixth Annual RID Litter Day is Saturday, April twenty-second. Volunteers will meet at nine AM in front of the recreation center, and all supplies will be provided. They'll give you a glow-in-the-dark orange vest or a yellow vest, and they'll give you garbage bags and gloves, and then you get to pick your streets, and then you get to leave the trash bags on the side of the road, and Public Works will come by and pick them up. So please do not forget, come out to the recreation center, April twenty-second, nine AM, and help make our village beautiful. And the Summer Recreation Guide will be live this week, so keep an eye out for updates on the Recreation in Parks social media pages. New this summer includes drawing classes, youth track and field, an improv workshop, and a strings music camp put on in partnership with the Suburban Youth Symphony Orchestra. We'll also continue to offer our pickleball one-on-one clinics, as well as social, non-competitive open-play nights to get more familiar with gameplay. So there's a lot of cool things. Please check out the guide online, or you can come in here or at the rec center and pick up an actual printed copy. And that concludes my report.
Mike and Rick, can we make sure that the paving information is either in the weekly updates or on the website or something? Thanks.
And one other thing, do we have a plan in place in, in the event that it is under construction during the playground during Autumn in the Park? Is there a way that, do we know that it's going to be, or if it is, can we make sure that it's fenced off safely, or?
Certainly. The, the whole plan is to try to have it finished by Autumn in the Park Festival. We'll see when the equipment comes in. We'll try to schedule accordingly. We just won't rip it apart prior to that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Before or after?
But not during.
Building, building in public property. Commissioner Wade?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. If you, real quick, if you hire landscapers to work on your house this spring or summer, please remember that they need to be registered with the Village of Pales Park. The two-page contractor registration form is to be filled out, certificate of insurance submitted, as well as a registration fee paid. Thank you for registering to work in the village. If you need assistance with the contract, with the contractor registration process, call seven oh eight, six seven one, thirty-seven, thirty-three. The building department processed eight permits from March twenty-two to April fifth, resulting in four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars in permit fees, and that brings our total to year to one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven thirty-five and eighty-six cents. So thank you for that, and I have two other agenda matters real quick. First, ZBA two thousand twenty-two dash oh one, real quick, an ordinance extending the time period for compliance with section twelve sixty-four, spot oh nine, A, of the Pales Park Village Code by six months with respect to a certain front yard setback variation. Approved pursuant to ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen, adopted April twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-two, entitled, "An Ordinance Approving a Certain Front Yard Setback Variation, Commonly Known as Ninety-One Oh Nine West One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street." Just a little background on this, on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the village council approved ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen, granting a front yard setback variance of forty-two spot four, eight feet from the required ninety-two spot seven-three-foot setback, resulting in fifty-spot-two-five-foot setback to allow for the construction of a new family residence at the property, commonly known as Ninety-One Oh Nine West One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street. The council vote was four-nothing on that. The applicant has not yet submitted a building permit. The applicant has stated that there have been several construction constraints, including supply issues related to concrete and lumber. Per section twelve sixty-four, spot oh nine, see, the applicant has requested a six-month extension for the approved variance to allow for more time to apply for and obtain the necessary building permit. Any questions on this? If not, I move to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash ten, an ordinance extending the time period for compliance with section twelve sixty-four, spot oh nine, of the Pales Park Village Code by six months with respect to a certain front yard setback variation. Approved pursuant to ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen, adopted April twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-two, entitled, "An Ordinance Approving a Certain Front Yard Setback Variation for Ninety-One Oh Nine West One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street."
Second. Hearing a motion and a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters? Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
And one more. This has kind of been something we've been working on for a while. Approval of Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash Uh, approval of resolution twenty twenty three dash R dash oh one, uh, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Camero's LTD limit, uh, relative to an update of the, uh, village's development regulations. Uh, just some background on this, uh, this process started back in July eleventh of twenty twenty two. The village council approved the release of a request for qualifications pertaining, pertaining to the Payless Park Development Code update project. Three firms responded to the RFQ, Camero's, Ansel Glenc, and Housio Levine. A review team consisting of the mayor, building commissioner, plan commission chair, zoning board of appeals chair, village manager, and community development director evaluated the submittals based on their experience, qualifications, references, and proposed approach to the project. All three of the, all three of the initial submittals significantly exceeded the seventy five thousand dollar budget, uh, by the village for this project. As a result, the village followed up, followed up with the three firms to clarify the scope of the work. All three firms submitted revisions, which were further reviewed. A revision from Ansel Glenc did not include a complete finalized ordinance and therefore did not meet the requirements of the RFQ. The revised submission from Housio Levine was, uh, was for a not-to-exceed amount of seventy five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars with an additional fifteen hundred dollar option for attendance at certain meetings. The Camero's resubmital was, uh, for a not-to-exceed amount of seventy five thousand four hundred dollars. The review team reviewed the revised submittals and conducted follow-up interviews with Housio and Camero's. At the conclusion of the process, the team decided to select Camero's as the recommended firm to proceed with the update of the village, of the village's, uh, development regulations. Uh, finally, Camero's is a planning firm that provides a full range of services, including, uh, in the areas of planning, zoning, urban design, economic development, and landscape architecture. The firm is based in Chicago and has extensive experience with zoning code update projects with municipalities both in the Chicago area and nationally. Local examples of the development code and zoning projects include Oak Park, Lagrange Park, Niles, Park Ridge, and Gurnee. Arista Strungus, uh, F A I C P, and P P is the partner with Camero's and will serve as the project manager for the Payless Park Development Code. Uh, I actually had a chance to meet her. I kind of went off script a little bit, went to the office and got a chance to meet her, and she's, she's top-notch, she's energetic, and she's really excited to get going on this project. Uh, so, uh, do we have any other questions?
I just, uh, wanted to thank, especially Ed Marson and John Marsh, um, for their help throughout the process, and Mark Herman for his great job and, and bring, uh, three qualified firms we interviewed to. They were both excellent, was a really hard decision, um, uh, but it was an excellent process.
Yeah, I think the right choice was made.
Yeah, I'm very confident that Camero's would do a great job.
Mm-hmm. Uh, if that's it, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash R dash oh one, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Camero's relative to an update of the village's development regulations.
Second. Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. That's all for you.
That is it, yep.
Excellent.
That concludes my report, sorry.
Public health and safety, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start off with the police activity report from the twenty seventh of March through the ninth of April, year of our Lord, twenty twenty three. We had eighteen hundred and ninety calls for service, an additional twenty five citizen assist calls, and twenty-two case reports. Unfortunately, four accident reports arrested a single adult, fortunately no juveniles, did not impound any vehicles, made seventy-eight traffic stops, thirty-seven moving violations, and additional seven adjudication tickets, as well as forty-three speeding tickets. So that's what the Payless Park Police Department's been up to over the last couple of weeks. And then just a couple of quick thoughts. The first is we have had another, uh, senior scam reported where a scammer posing as a comm ed employee called our victim, using a number that appeared to be a comm ed phone number. That's a spoof, so just because it says it on your phone doesn't mean it's coming from there. The individual threatened to turn off the customer's service, and here's the kicker, asked them to make a payment with a prepaid cash card. Whoa. At least it wasn't a gift card, you know, pennies somewhere. So again, a tip-off there. First of all, comm ed's not calling you, they're sending you a letter. Second of all, if they're looking for payment, they're looking for like a real payment, like a check, or perhaps a credit card. I don't think comm ed actually accepts cash anymore, but certainly a prepaid gift card would not be on the list. So again, we'd like to warn you guys to be on the alert. Uh, these fake representatives often threaten some dire result if you don't immediately pay. Um, so, and comm ed never asks a customer to purchase a prepaid card to make a payment on a bill. Uh, the more it changes, the more it stays the same. Uh, make you aware of the fact that April is National Distracted Driving Awareness Month, so please be careful out there. If you found yourself not watching the road, you're putting yourself in danger. We'll be doing our own special enforcement through the Payless Park Police Department, monitoring, uh, to try and reduce the incidence of distracted driving. Uh, we'll be watching particular intersections in order to, uh, let's just say, re-educate drivers that are distracted, who particularly violate red light traffic signals. So, um, be careful out there, and if you're driving the car, you're not talking to somebody on the phone, or changing the radio, or whatever other voodoo, putting on your makeup, eating lunch. Uh, so again, um, please be careful out there. There's still people causing accidents, doing silly things. And then finally, uh, before we get to Chief Miller, we're still giving away bike helmets at the Payless Park Police Department. Uh, we give out helmets to local children as part of the National Children and Safety Program. These helmets can be picked up at the Payless Park Police Department during normal business hours, right here at the Capter Center on the other side. Any more information, you can always give me an email, dpolk, D P O L K, at paylesspark.org, or you can contact the station at seven oh eight, six seven one, three seven, seven zero. Chief Miller, anything else you'd care to add? Thank you for your service and the rest of the team. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, a council finances report, Commissioner Reed is absent this evening, so I'm going to, uh, read this item on his agenda. Uh, the village of Payless Park operates under the Budget Act as outlined with the, within the Illinois compiled statutes. As is required, the village must adopt an annual budget prior to the start of the fiscal year for which the budget applies. The village's budget represents the financial roadmap used to guide programs, events, services, and projects within the budget year. The village's proposed annual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, starting on May first, two thousand twenty three, and ending on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, is on file in the lobby of the Capter Administrative Center and on the village's website under the Finance Department section. A public hearing will be held at our next council meeting on April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three. Final action on an ordinance to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty four budget is scheduled at the April twenty fourth council meeting. Village staff, uh, have been working diligently over the last several months on the fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty four budget. Some of the highlights include in the proposed, proposed budget include balanced budget, expected, expected again in the general fund, which is the village's main or core operating fund. No decline to current village services, increased recreation department programs and offerings, and nearly one point nine oh million in street paving and maintenance projects. Uh, we are, uh, going to purchase two new police squad cars, uh, new playground structures at the Village Green that you heard about this evening, completion of a new enterprise resource planning system. A couple of the many benefits of this new system is that residents can begin to make payments to the village online, as well as apply for or check the application status for many types of building permits online. Uh, the village's finances are strong. With this comes opportunities to invest in our community. The village's proposed fiscal two thousand twenty four budget will be, will definitely invest in Payless Park. The items previously mentioned are just a few examples of investments in our community for this next fiscal year, starting May first. Um, so that to happen at the next meeting. Um, and that concludes Commissioner Reed's report. Mayor's report, uh, I don't have anything this evening, I just wanted to mention that, uh, the village manager, Commissioner Milovich Walters, and myself will be heading down to Springfield, I believe, next Wednesday, Tuesday. Uh, and Tuesday and Wednesday, we're going to spend two full days, almost, in Springfield this year. We usually spend one night and one full day, uh, but we're going down for a subject matter hearing on, uh, a local government distributive fund, uh, for those who, uh, are unaware of what that is. Uh, in nineteen seventy Constitutional Convention, uh, the municipalities agreed to give up their right to, uh, levy a separate income tax in exchange for which they would receive a share of the income tax collected by the state of Illinois. Uh, at one time, that percentage was ten percent, so we would receive ten percent of all income tax collected would be distributed to, uh, municipalities on a per capita basis. Uh, that percentage is now about six point two six percent, uh, and we've been working very hard, the last couple of years especially, we're making a, a, a real, uh, press this year to get, uh, the legislature to commit to, uh, raising it back to the ten percent, even if it's not all at once, if it's, um, over a several-year period. Uh, so we will be working on that in Springfield, that'll be our main, uh, topic, uh, attending the subject matter hearing, uh, and then meeting with our legislatures, uh, legislators on, uh, Wednesday, um, to discuss, uh, primarily the progress of the LGDF. So that concludes my report. Clerk Carigoni?
Um, I have no report.
Thank you. Manager Man?
I have one item. Hit the button. I've got one item for the council's consideration, and that's replacement of carpeting at the Capter Administrative and Police Center. Um, on December twenty fifth of twenty twenty two, it was a great day, uh, fire sprinkler, uh, pipe burst, uh, at a fitting in the Capter Center lobby. Resulting water damage affected this room, uh, the administrative offices in the police department, as well as the general administrative areas of the village hall. Our insurance pool, the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, IRMA, has approved various aspects of the damage mitigation and cleanup companies used to date. IRMA adjusters have approved the replacement of all contiguous carpeting in the Capter Administrative and Police Center building. Existing carpeting is original to the building in two thousand one. Uh, so because they don't have, uh, thresholds around here, it's all continuous through the offices, so it will all be replaced, uh, through this, um, agreement. IRMA has agreed to pay, uh, the chosen approved vendor directly, or the village is being asked to sign the proposals and make certain the work is performed to our satisfaction. Existing carpeting is proposed to be replaced with twenty-four inch by twenty-four inch carpet squares. In addition, uh, to the purchase of the carpeting, the scope of work will include moving furniture, skim coating the floor, and installing the carpeting squares. Uh, the village staff had identified vendor Key Carpet Corporation of Oaklawn, and IRMA has approved this vendor and its proposed, uh, and its proposal in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. So we're, staff is recommending that the village council approve this, uh, proposal, uh, that we can move ahead, and IRMA will pay the vendor directly.
Rick, is it Key Carpet or Kay Carpet?
Uh, I, I, I think it's Key.
It's Key.
Key.
Okay, because in the agenda it says something else. So, uh, I'd like to approve foregoing the formal bid process and award the proposal to Key Carpet Corporation to replace the carpeting in the Capter Administrative and Police Center in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars with IRMA paying the vein, vendor directly, and I'd seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
That's all I have.
I've got a few announcements. The zoning board of appeals meeting is canceled for Wednesday, April twelfth, as there are no agenda items. The police pension board will hold a regular meeting on Monday, April seventeenth, at seven, uh, PM at the Capter Administrative Center. The historic preservation committee will not meet on Tuesday, April eighteenth, as there are no agenda items. The recreation advisory committee will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, April eighteenth, at seven PM at the rec center. The library board will hold their regular meeting on Wednesday, April nineteenth, at five PM in the library. The Payless Fine Arts Committee will hold their regular meeting on Thursday, April twentieth, at four fifteen PM at the Capter Administrative Center, and the planned commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, April twentieth is canceled, as there are no agenda items. Village of Payless Park awarded its thirtieth consecutive Tree City USA. The Tree City USA program has been greening up cities and towns across America since nineteen seventy six. It is a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. More than thirty-four hundred communities have made the commitment to become a Tree City USA. The village of Payless Park was just awarded our thirtieth Tree City USA Award for two thousand twenty two. In nineteen ninety-two, village staff and community volunteers began the process of meeting all the categories necessary to achieve Tree City USA status, which is awarded through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Village staff and volunteers continue annually to meet the required Tree City USA requirements as follows: a tree board or department, a tree care ordinance, a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least two dollars per capita, and an Arbor Day observation and proclamation. Since nineteen ninety-two, we have passed out over ten thousand trees seedlings at our Arbor Day celebrations, in addition to planting over twelve hundred trees on public property throughout our community. I'm happy to say I have a few in my yard. That concludes my announcements. Citizens and visitors comment period. Anyone from the audience like to address the council? Mary Ann?
It's called speeding. I wonder if we could ask the state of Illinois to come in and give some traffic study for all the accidents between a hundred nineteenth street and, say, a hundred forty-third and Grange Road, a hundred forty-third, up to Moose and that end. When you go on either of those streets, I believe they're state-operated, these three have the plows go down that way, and there's no, very few people abide by the speed limit. It's like zoom wheel, doesn't matter which street it is. Uh, fifty miles an hour is not uncommon on either of those streets, and for those that, even if you go four, you know, speed limit might be forty, and you try to go forty-three miles an hour, they're still on your gag sign, killing you. There really should be more officers out there, perhaps a state that supplied it to work with our police department. It's, and the state has four officers from West White Car, by the way, to be sitting out there, or in, or the state, there're going to be two, because one, officer can be on the side with his, uh, radar system, and another attached that pool, and he goes down another two hundred feet at fifty miles an hour and taking that person, or people. It's costly. You might as well have Lamborghini's running up and down the streets. So I thought, well, come over here, it comes tonight, and since you're going to Springfield, tonight may get a proposal to the state police, as well as coordinate that with the chief. Anyway, it's just a matter of time, the more and more accidents are taking place because of carelessness as people approach the stoplights. They're supposed to slow down according to the rules of the road, unless that was taken off, I would look, so I haven't read that book for a while, but it had to be there. So when we get our train with Sandberg or Drive, that was primarily. So when we get our train in Sandberg or drive, that was part of the consideration, slow down as you approach the stoplights. What the normal regular drivers do is zoom past there at 50, 60 miles an hour, and then they have these perpetual collisions, even on 131st. So that's a suggestion I have for you, and your staff and group down there, to contact the state and see what they have available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary.
Anyone else like to address the council this evening? Hearing no such request, I would seek a motion to adjourn at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, and good evening.
Be safe out there.